We will now call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aiken Planning Commission for its February 9, 2016, meeting. If there's anyone in the audience who has not been here before, let me share that the first rule is we ask that you turn your cellphones off or put them on vibrate, out of respect for whoever is speaking. And if I will ask for those who wish to speak regarding an application, if you would like to be heard, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then address the commission. After you have finished making your points, if you would pause for a moment to see if there are any questions from the commission. After that, we'll ask if anybody would like to speak in opposition to an application, and the same process will apply. And at the end, anyone who would like to speak in any rebuttal may certainly do so. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes of the January 12 work session and regular meeting, and the special meeting and work session of January 27. Are there any changes or corrections anyone would like to offer?
My name is mistyped in the... It's mistyped in one of them. That was... It needs a capital letter.
Okay.
In the special work session.
All right. So we've got... So would you like to make a motion to approve them with that correction?
Yes, please. So I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the special work session and the regular work session. As I stand with the correction of my name in the special work session minutes.
All right. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to change the order of the agenda and move item C to item A. May I have a motion to do so?
To move.
May I have a second? All right. All in favor? Okay. All right. So we will go ahead and talk about the capital improvement program. And I see we have everyone ready to answer some questions. Would you like to speak to that?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and through you to the members of the Planning Commission. We very much appreciate this opportunity to appear before you again to discuss our long-range capital needs. I know that you have already spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the materials from our department heads and very much looking forward to your recommendations. And I assure you that your recommendations by me as your new city manager is not only appreciated, but they will be valued. And we will forward those to our city council for their consideration when we go through the budgetary process. You know, each year, we appear before you to ask for your recommendations on a wide array of projects. But as we mentioned in our earlier workshop, there kind of is an inconvenient truth here in Aiken. And that is, for too many years, while we have gone through this annual process, the truth is, is that the largest of all capital projects have gone unaddressed. And it is our desire, and I am extraordinarily thankful to all of you for your commitment and your willingness to work with us in partnership over the next three to five years in addressing those long-neglected capital needs. What the... Why the reason was that decisions were made in the past to kind of kick the can down the road really at this point is not important. I guess the bad news is that we have neglected our major infrastructure needs for too long. The good news is that the truth is, is that we still have time in a responsible way to answer these needs in a long-term approach. Obviously, it's going to take a lot of hard work, and I hope that I can count on all of you to work in partnership with us to try to address these needs. So what are those needs, and what do we know, and what do we not know? Truth is, is that we don't really know the true condition of our major infrastructure assets, whether they be our stormwater, stormwater, our wastewater, our drinking water, infrastructure, our roads. The truth is, is that there hasn't been a comprehensive analysis done that would indicate to us in the first instance what the present condition of our infrastructure is. And we need to do that. And tonight, once again, George Gritten from Engineering and Utilities will make a brief presentation to you and to our citizens about approaching that complex issue and what we plan to do over the next year or two in addressing that so that once and for all, we have a full assessment and a full understanding of what our infrastructure needs are. Because we don't have a true assessment of what our needs are, then we don't have any long-range plan in place to maintain that infrastructure. And lastly, we don't have a financing plan, a funding mechanism, in place to address those needs. As I said, the bad... That is the bad news. But the good news is that there is time in Aiken to correct the situation and put us back in a strong footing so that we don't pass on to our children and our grandchildren a totally unacceptable burden that they would have to deal with at a later date. And so I would like to turn to George Gritten for a short presentation, and once again, thank all of you for your willingness to work with us. I look forward to a long-term working relationship and a commitment. I believe that you, in your role as members of our Planning Commission, understand probably better than most the importance of these issues, and I suspect that you and hope that you will be strong advocates with some of us as we move forward in what is, we hope, acting in the best interest of our citizens. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk about our infrastructure. When John first challenged us with doing an assessment, asking when he first came, asked us where we were, and basically, we weren't anywhere, he challenged us then with, well, how do you develop a plan? So what we did is, we went out and we evaluated how other cities are assessing infrastructure. And we realized that what the very first thing we needed really was a database of what we have, an accounting for what we have. We do have a GIS system, which is a great asset, but it needed to be updated, it needs to be expanded for the various infrastructure. And then in conjunction with some appropriate software program that where we can reside the information, we can analyze the information, we can create a probability of failure, a consequence of failure, and therefore, you can come up with a risk and a prioritization of what are the projects you want to do. It's a big daunting task, but you need to know where to start. And if you put the information in a logical sequence, you can figure out where your priorities are and where we get started. So that's what we're doing. So let me give you a little bit of information as to where we are. The city operates and maintains 281 miles of sanitary sewer lines. We have 409 miles of water lines, and we have 99 miles of water laterals that do everything that we need to do for the city. Eighty percent of the information for sanitary sewer has been gathered and updated in our GIS, and 60 percent for water. We, as part of our effort, we have taken the as-built drawings, we scanned them, and then we've had our GIS consultants putting them into our software so that we can identify each segment. We know what its age is, we know what its material is, we know where it's located, and then the software can tell us where our priorities are. And that is what we did to evaluate our needs for the... our five-year capital plan. Now, in specific detail, we have 60 miles of sanitary sewer lines that have reached or exceeded their 50-year projected expected life. Of that, 28 miles have actually exceeded their expected life by 25 years. So that really identifies our priorities for us. The first priority is to examine the 28 miles and develop projects to rehabilitate those 28 miles. The second priority have is for the remaining miles, 32 miles, is to look at where the priority, the trunk lines, the collector lines are, where you're gathering a lot of the sewer. That'll be our second priority, to do the same thing, camera it and understand where our problems are, and then create projects to improve it. This is a little bit of a picture. You know, a picture says a thousand words. Well, what you see there is the 60 miles that are in the red are the miles that are have already reached their expected useful life. If you look in the yellow, the yellow is the next 10 years. This is where the next row... the next sewer lines will reach their useful life and become a problem. The green then are further down the road and not going to be an immediate problem. The gray area is sewer lines that we don't have good information on, and so one of the things we're going to have to do is send people out, look at it, and investigate it. So that'll be another portion. And then that'll get us from 80% up to closest to 100% as we can get. This is a graph of... or a table of what our costs should be. If you look at the 2016, this cost is kind of the cumulative effect of what has already gone beyond its expected life. These are replacement costs, and this would be what we would consider a waste case... a worst-case scenario. We would expect that we could rehabilitate a lot of the roads, or I keep saying roads, a lot of the sewers. And so the real cost might be 40%, might be 70%, might be 80%. In some situations, you will be replacing, you know, particularly bad lines. And so it... We have a five-year projected cumulative cost. As time goes on, you have... You continue to have more sewer lines coming of age, as it were. The red represents the present-day cost estimate for rehabilitation of those lines. The blue starts to project inflation. So if there's a 4% increase in inflation for costs, then that's where the costs, you know, start going out to. Turning now to water, we have 25 miles of lines that have reached their projected useful life. And in water, there's actually some lines that have a much longer expected life than you would think. In 1911, the city opened the Spring... the Shiloh Springs Water Treatment Plant and started delivering water to its citizens. That pipe's 105 years old now. It's a 14-inch line that came from on the other side of the interstate now, and it actually went to a tank that was between the present-day Public Safety Building and the Post Office, where that gazebo is. So from there, there was a 10-inch line that went and looped around the city, went down to Highland Park, up Lancaster, and came back, and another line came out. And throughout the main part of the city, you have 6-inch, 4-inch, 2-inch lines. This is all cast iron, very thick pipe. It's actually very good. We've taken a small section and a small sample and done some leak detection, and it actually is holding up pretty well. So that's an example of with water, it's a little tougher to tell just how long the useful life of these systems will be. But we know that in the next 10 years, 60 more miles of water lines will reach their useful life. We do have a certain amount of asbestos-containing material. That was something that was put in the 60s, '70s, and that we'd like to get that out of the ground. So what we're recommending is that we do a citywide leak detection evaluation and determine where our biggest problems are, and then use that as our point of identifying priority. We're also recommending that we do a hydraulic model of the water distribution system, and what that will do for us, it basically gives us the opportunity to evaluate where we can make improvements. If you have an aging infrastructure or a delicate infrastructure, if you're kinder and gentler to it, you won't have as many leaks. And so that's one of the things that we hope to be able to do with this, find out where we have high pressures, where would be the best pace... place to locate a pressure reduction valve system to improve the performance of the water system and not be so hot... tough on our pipes. So that is something else that we'll be working on. And then this is a similar picture. You can see the red line. Basically, the red line that extends on up, that's the 105-year-old cast iron line from Shiloh circling the plant. You've got a few other pipes that are in the red that have exceeded their... are reaching their useful life, but they were later installed. So they were installed in the '50s, so they're expected, you know, 50-year life. Same thing, you have the green and the yellow, yellow being the next 10 years. But we also have a larger number of gray pipes in this situation. We only have 60%. You can see, again, the cost estimates for replacement and a little bit of a visual graph of the same. So this is what our water analysis software is able to do, some water sewer. We can also apply it to roads. We have 85 miles of Aiken roads in the city. We have 153 miles that are state-maintained. We have four miles of county roads, 48 miles of private, and one mile of private drives. I'm not sure why that has a different distinction, but we're concerned with the 85. If you look at... We just recently probably paid for the first time using city funds in, I don't know, well, since I've been here. I've been with the city four and a half years now, and we had not done any repaving until this summer, this past summer. If you take that contract price, you divide out the number of miles, you need to do 4.3 miles, and when you do the math of the reprocessing, you need to spend $500,000 a year. Basically, now, forever, because, you know, that's if you have a 20-year life performance of your roads. And some roads will probably last a little longer, and some maybe not so long. So one of the things that we will be doing is putting this information into our GIS system and analyzing with our Innovise software. And then this will allow us to do the same thing with roads as we're doing with sanitary sewer and with the other... with water. And lastly, we have storm sewer. We have not yet started putting the stormwater in. The GIS data that we had was probably the weakest for stormwater. So we wanted to tackle the other two first, and we will put the objective into putting that into the system next year. We had 100... We have estimated about 121 miles of stormwater lines, and we projected it for the capital budget process, it's just $100,000, which is really just an estimate of, you know, how much could we do if we started focusing on some stormwater? So we'll... We will also do the same. We'll analyze the segments, we'll look at our priorities, and then we'll start trying to identify projects after we inspect them. So that is the... That's the presentation. Do you have any questions?
All right. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you.
I would just like to conclude, Madam Chair, by reminding you that unfortunately, everything we've talked about tonight is about maintaining that which we already have. In addition, as all of you know, we have other problems that need to be resolved, and the resolution of those problems might be, for example, the addition of new roadways that come at a... an additional cost. They say a journey of 1,000 miles starts with a single step, and we're trying to take that single step. And I hope that the Planning Commission, with your very busy schedule, will play a major role in helping us push this ball down the field. As you know, we have a list, a laundry list of projects for your consideration. We have our department heads here this evening to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, back to you. Any questions for a department head?
Well, I think it's... We've gotten a lot of information, John, Mr. Clem, and I certainly applaud you for that. You've done a lot of work. You've done a lot of work just to figure out how much work you got to do, and that's kind of where you are. And that's... It's not... There's no need harping on issues that we can't do anything about. But you have done... At least you have, it looks like to me, at least you have a plan to determine what kind of problems you got, and that's where you got to start. I mean, obviously, you look at these numbers, they're just bottom of the mind when you start looking at, you know, half of $500 million dollars and this kind of enormous numbers over the next 10, 15 years. It's bottom of the mind. But you've done what you need to do, I think, as far as trying to determine the extent of the problem, and that's where you got to start. And it's not a sexy topic, but it's a topic that we are not only... It's Aiken, it's just a microcosm of the whole country. The whole country has got this problem, big time, and all we can do here locally is try to work on our little corner of the world.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions?
Well, just to quickly, if I may echo what Mr. Hunter said, this really is, in my opinion, I've been here 21 years, a watershed in city thinking, which is not only paramount that we get started on this just based on the presentation, but just this... the philosophy of needs before wants. And I know there's a lot of people out there in the community that, myself included, maybe over the years, I don't know if our voices were clearly heard on water leaks and things of that nature. But this, to me, is just a watershed change in the way the city does business on behalf of its citizens. So I would say for those people at home, clearly, you can hear from the presentations, the city has heard your voices, and so has the Planning Commission. So we're very excited about this going forward. And again, that was an excellent presentation, Mr. Gritten.
Well, I'll certainly have to echo those words. I think, you know, we've been doing... Some of us on the commission have been here longer than others, and those of us who have some tenure have heard a number of these presentations. And I will tell you, we have never heard a presentation, both in the work session and here this evening, that comes close to being not only as comprehensive, but as accurate and as forward-thinking as we have heard. And I know that that is in part due to the new leadership, but it also speaks well for, I know, the amount of work that each of you department heads had to do to accomplish this. So I want to commend you and thank you. And this time, we're looking at this a little bit differently. I know I speak for the commission when I say we certainly feel a greater sense of partnership and engagement in this process, and we will work very hard to live up to that challenge. I think the community has a challenge, and we need to begin the education process. I think we can say you have educated the commission very well, and now I think we need to roll that out to the community, because I will tell you that I do not believe the community has a sense of just how extensive and expensive some of our issues are. I think that will be the next big challenge, but I want to commend all of you for the hard work on this. All right. Now, we are... We need to have a motion, and we'll speak to the priority section. So it is back to the commission.
Madam Chairman, you'd like a motion with regard to our recommendations as far as the capital improvements lists and the other various priority lists, water and sewer fund, stormwater fund, et cetera?
That would be correct.
Okay. I would move, then, Madam Chairman, that we, with regard to the capital improvements as recommended by staff, and there's no exhibit on it, but it's part of 3C, in which we've moved to number... to A. With regard to that list, I would move that... I would move that we place the... Number one be... Would continue to be number one. Number two would be the Pawnee-Nelson Connector. Number three would be the Hitchcock Parkway Carter Improvements. Number four would be purchasing a New England... a new engine and pumper. And then number five would pick up with... back with number two with Parks Operations Center Roof Replacement, and the remainder would be in the order in which they are listed herein. With regard to the stormwater fund, I would recommend no changes to that, no changes to the Water and Sewer Utility Fund. And with regard to the capital project sales tax, I would move that we make the Powderhouse and Centennial Parkway Connectors with Whiskey, which is now number nine, make that number four, make the Municipal Building Expansion number six, and the remaining ones would fall in line thereafter as they are listed on the document. And I think, as part of my motion, I would just say that that's based basically on what the... I would consider the greater good for the greater number of people. The traffic issues, which we've got, and we're trying to alleviate by this and enhancing the aspect of development and growth and business development in Aiken.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All right. And the earliest this would be on the city council agenda will be the 22nd, and that will certainly be up to the city manager to put on the agenda. And again, we thank you very much for a wonderful presentation. All right. Our next item of business is now application 3A and B, which is the application for rezoning and the concept plan for Aiken County Public Schools on Rutland Drive, which is Aiken High School. Is there someone who'd like to speak to this application? And your audience is dwindling.
Thank you, Madam Chair and commission members. My name is Alan Taylor. I am with LS3P Architects in Columbia, and I am the architect of the Aiken High School project, and just want to be here to answer any questions you might have this evening.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? I think this is a very eagerly awaited project, so you're probably not going to find too much objection. Is there anyone present who would like to speak against this application? Sir, do you wish to be heard?
Yes.
All right, sir. You may step forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Excuse me. I'm Ralph Courtney. I live at 3422 Meadow Drive here in Aiken. I don't really... I want to speak. I don't really have an objection, but yet, it's not really for... I just want a clarification.
Certainly.
Okay. I understand this is in the conceptual phase. Am I correct about that? It's still concept? And my question has to do... We do have two tri-development center where I am employed, has two homes that are actually owned by the South Carolina Department of Disabilities and Special Needs that are located on Dupont Drive...
Correct.
...immediately behind the school. My concern is... Has been, to a great degree, allayed by having a copy of this that shows that there's no large, massive student exits right across the street where we have people with disabilities living. It is going to probably increase some of the traffic on Dupont Drive because that parking lot that is showing up on Rutland and Dupont, I don't have a major objection to that. I just didn't want a lot of students pulling out, making a right turn right across the street from where we would be coming out with 15-passenger van making a left turn. Just didn't think that would be safe. Uh, just didn't think that would be safe. Right now, there is already some parking very close to where we're located, uh, but it's minimal. And according to the plan that I've received today, it would continue to be minimal. What I'm seeing is only about 10 parking places. I would assume that would be for maintenance or, uh, some of the faculty. Is that?
I think he's talking about this parking lot.
Correct about that?
Are, are you addressing the little parking lot with the driveway that goes around the retention pond? Is that the one?
Yes.
And that's about right across from where you are?
Yes.
What, what would that parking lot be?
That is staff parking.
So it would be?
It is staff parking. And, and regardless, that's not a lot of cars. And I also, since it's conceptual, I wanted to make sure that at some point, the little drive around the retention didn't become a shortcut for students to access, because that, access that, uh, Dupont by cutting the corner. Uh, since it's conceptual, I would just like it to stay like it is. That's, it's not an objection, but...
No, I, I just, it's clarification, and we appreciate that.
I was just gonna say, maybe going forward, as this continues, there may be some things that could be done about traffic flow and the direction of the traffic to alleviate any concerns that you might have, and...
You also have a nursing home right next.
Yes, yes.
Well...
Okay. Um, would you all like to address? You may step forward and address.
Sure. I'll, I'll be glad to address that. That is, uh, that is the bus loop and staff access only, and that will be built in this, um, first phase in Phase 2A that's going in. So that, that part is not conceptual. That is, uh, will be constructed, um, starting, uh, this spring. That's part of the first, part of the project. So there will not be any...
There will not be any students.
No access to, to that.
Okay.
That will be as, as shown.
So, Mr. Courtney, does that alleviate your concern?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I'm involved in the process.
Well, thank you very much for raising the issue. All right, and thank you for responding. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, uh, relative to this application? Yes, sir. If you'll step forward.
My name is David Osborne. I own property on Dupont, right by the nursing home.
Okay.
I lived there for 48 years. School traffic has never been a big problem. And that, the retention pond, there's no way any student could drive through it because it's fenced around. And if it did, it'd go in a big hole like this, and I don't think that would be any problem. But I love the plan that you have here, and I think it'd be a great asset to the city and the county of Aiken.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, not hearing any. Um, I'll bring it back to the Council, Commission for a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
With respect to application number 16-60004, the rezoning of the property at 449 Rutland Avenue, or Rutland Drive, owned by Aiken County Public Schools, and application number 16-23008, the concept plan relating to the property at 449 Rutland Drive, also owned by Aiken County Public Schools. I move that we recommend this to City Council as it is because it does comply with the planned institutional criteria.
Sir.
You have a second?
Correct.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. And this will be, um, going to council at the earliest would be the, uh, February 22nd meeting, and it will go to council with our recommendation. All right. Now, there being nothing else on the agenda, I do want to take a moment of, um, some prerogative here before we adjourn. And, um, as many of you know, this is the last Planning Commission that, uh, Interim Director Tommy Paradise will be attending. And we felt that we would be remiss if we did not take a moment to, to thank him for all the years of hard work and all the years especially, um, with support of the Planning Commission. And so, Tommy, for your new office, we have a plaque that we want to share, and we want you to have that so you don't, uh, forget us and that you answer the phone when we call you with questions, and, um, and just tell you how much we have appreciated everything you have done for the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and with that, we will now happily adjourn.